It's 6:00 PM. Good afternoon, everyone. I am calling this meeting to order. I am Mayor Yomika Robinson and I'm asking everyone to please silence your cellphones before we begin our meeting on tonight. First, I need to make a motion to amend the agenda with the removal of Resolution 2024.033 and the addition of a presentation to Victims Advocate/Investigator Yvonne McKnight. Just make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It has been properly moved as second. Any questions, counsel?
I have a question. Why are we removing the Resolution 2024.033? For final reading, why are we removing that resolution?
Just to have more clarification and discussion on it later, to bring it back if we can.
Well, I'd like to, since you've made the motion, has it been approved? Well, I'd like to add to that, that it does not appear that it's removed permanently and that it does not appear on any future ordinances or resolutions in Lake City, South Carolina, nor any of the language contained within shall appear on any ordinance or resolution in Lake City, South Carolina. Period. Permanently deluded.
Any other comments or questions, counsel?
I want to know why can't we vote on it tonight and why we need to go to further discussion? And I feel that we should go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Okay. Okay, so this will be the vote for to amend the agenda of a removal of this resolution from this agenda. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor for removing this resolution on tonight?
Can we add to that permanently and in the future that it shall not appear on any agenda, any agenda item or any ordinance or resolution in the future?
No, ma'am. That's not part of my motion for tonight.
Well, I can add to that motion.
All in favor, show of hands?
To amend for tonight, correct?
Yes. All opposed? Thank you, council members. The motion is dead. Yes, thank you. Next, we'll have an invocation led by Mayor Robinson and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Cooper. Can we all stand, please? Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks, we give you honor, we give you glory on this evening. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be able to come back together to talk about the business of the city, the city of Lake City. Lord, we ask you to just have this meeting the way that you need and see fit for us to continue to move this city forward. Lord, please, please take care of all the families who are going through bereavement. Please ease their hearts and ease their minds. Lord, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Mayor President Paul Thompson.
Present.
Mayor President Paul Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember William Scott. Councilmember William Askin.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Polynice.
Present.
And Councilmember Jason Raff.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I'm going to be involved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
Motion to adopt.
Second. It has been properly moved as second. Any questions, counsel?
Yes, I have a question. I noticed that the format is very different on the agenda. And I think it's not, in my opinion, it's not totally inclusive of verbatim information that was shared during the meeting. It looks like you gave a conglomeration of just a synopsis of some of the discussion that took place.
May I ask a question? Are you talking about the agenda or minutes?
The minutes.
Or minutes. Okay, we haven't gotten there yet. We're on the adoption of the agenda.
Oh, that's still hold when it comes to the minutes.
Okay, any other questions or concerns about adopting the agenda? It has been properly moved as second. No questions, no more questions or concerns. All in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Now, we move to get a motion to approve the minutes, approval of the minutes from the mayor and council meeting, June 11, 2024, and special public call meeting held on June 17, 2024. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Has been properly moved as second. Any questions now on the minutes?
Okay, as I was about to start, I was getting early. What I said earlier was, I noticed the format is different and it appears to me that it's not verbatim.
Yes, ma'am.
And is there a reason for that?
It's not a requirement to do verbatim. Then supposedly the MASC frowned upon verbatim minutes. The only reason minutes are taken are motions only and actually they're taken, not verbatim. You have backup tape with it if you need it.
Okay, yeah, because I'd like to get a copy of the backup tape, please.
We also have it on Facebook Live that you can watch it as well.
I'd like to get a copy of the backup tape.
I can send that, it'll be an MP, I think an MP4, MP3 thing for you to go through. It's just that some of the minutes are, you know, verbatim are going 50, 60 pages long. And I have to read, even though we have the program that does it, I have to go back in and retype and reiterate everything and read them all over again because it doesn't become proper sentences and stuff like that. So it takes a lot of time to do that.
Okay, now where did MASC start this format?
Oh, it's always been like that.
Because this is the first time I've seen it like this.
Yeah, it's always, it's always been that way.
But we have not been utilizing it. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns, counsel? If none, all in favor for the approval of the minutes, show of hands. Thank you. Next on the agenda are our presentations. We have a number of presentations on tonight. First, we'll be recognizing three young ladies for participating in Palmetto Girls State. Ms. Chandler Brandon, Abigail Toledo, and Zaria Brown. Then we'll have our proclamation read by Mayor Robinson and along with Mayor Protiem, Nicole Singletary, Arts and Health Proclamation. We have Ms. Paula Morris coming up to speak about Lake City Community Group. Reverend Marvin Hemingway, PD Denim Day and PD Youth Day, and Chief Carlos Castillo and Mr. Orton Bellamy from Atlantic Beach Foreign War Presentation, to Amanda Diaz and Dedrick Graham, in that order, please. Ms. Chandler Brandon. We can get all the ladies, young ladies up here. Ms. Abigail Toledo and Zaria Brown. Good afternoon. So these young ladies represented Lake City, South Carolina very well. And I was able to witness myself, because this is my fourth year actually speaking at Palmetto Girls State, which was held in Clinton, South Carolina at Presbyterian College. And I'm just very, very proud and very honored to be able to recognize you three ladies tonight. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart as your mayor for representing the city of Lake City like you did and to continue to do great things in your life. Certificate of Achievement, I'm sorry. All the certificates read, "Certificate of Achievement, the city of Lake City recognizes Chandler Brandon as has successfully completed the Palmetto Girls State Program, which consists of a one-week leadership and citizenship training program on July 9, 2024, signed by yours truly, Honorable Mayor Yomika Robinson." And as Mayor Robinson just stated, all the certificates read the same, but this is to Abigail Toledo. And Zaria, Zaria Brown. This program, Palmetto Girls State, you actually have, they actually have 600-plus girls there from across the state of South Carolina. And I was very honored to be able to be on the stage along with MG Whitley, Councilwoman GM Whitley from Mount Pleasant, to be able to talk to these young ladies about being in the leadership role that I'm in, in the city of Lake City. So once again, congratulations and continue to do great things. Sorry. Congratulations. Thank you. Alrighty, so next on the agenda, we have the proclamation. This proclamation is initiated by the NLC Arts for Everybody, One Nation, One Project. One Nation, One Project is a national arts and health initiated design to activate the power of arts to repair the social fabric of our nation and heal our communities. We are bringing together artists, local governments, and community health providers to foster equitable recovery and improve health in communities across America. Our new campaign title, Arts for Everybody, will show how the arts can lead to a healthier people and healthier communities. On July 27, 2024, in big cities and rural countries, hundreds of people will create new works that show the world where they come from. The results would be a celebration of America, of unity through diversity. It would be an outpouring of local joy. Arts for Everybody would do more than entertain and inspire. It marks a breakthrough moment in the relationships between the arts and health in America.
Thank you, Mayor Protiem. I'm gonna grab that. Yes.
Oh, sorry. Arts and Health Day proclamation, whereas the National League of Cities recognizes that arts and culture have a tremendous impact on cities, towns, and villages across the country. Whereas the National League of Cities recognizes that the impact of arts and culture spans economic development, community and individual health, housing, and the built environment, workforce development, civic participation, education, activism, and social cohesion. Whereas participation in arts experiences has been shown to reduce depression and anxiety, improve physical health outcomes, reduce social isolation, and build strong community networks. Whereas through Arts for Everybody, the National League of Cities has championed the work of cities of all sizes to increase community well-being through partnerships with the arts and artist employment. Whereas the city of Lake City, South Carolina, is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. Whereas today, the National Venture Arts for Everybody is celebrating and amplifying the intrinsic health benefits of the arts and culture with 18 communities across the United States. Whereas Lake City, South Carolina, values the contribution of the arts and culture sector in the city of Lake City and how the arts make our community unique, engaging, and robust. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Yomika Robinson, the honorable mayor, along with the entire city council and administration hereby proclaims July 27, 2024 as Arts and Health Day in celebration of all that the arts and culture contribute to the social cohesion and well-being of the entire city of Lake City, South Carolina. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lake City, South Carolina, to be affixed on this ninth day of July to recognize the 27th day of July proclaimed as Arts and Health Day in the city of Lake City, South Carolina, signed by yours truly, the honorable mayor, Yomika Robinson. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council persons. About four years ago, as I was walking the track early one morning, the Lord dropped in my spirit to about unity here in Lake City. So immediately, I called Coach App and told him what the vision was and he bought into it and he had some other people that he called up and then we had a meeting. We didn't have a name of the group, but we had a meeting. At our first meeting, Mr. Hal Elwitz, who was a member of this group, said that before we try, and first let me tell you that community, our vision is, is this right, your community is the organization and our vision is to break the barrier between racism, denomination, and socialism here in Lake City. But Hal said to us the first meeting that what we need to do as a group, we need to meet several times to see where our hearts are at, to see whether we have any hate in our heart, any racism, any bias in our heart, because how are we going to help somebody else if we are still messed up? And those meetings was awesome. They were great to get us to where we are at today. And we have done a lot in this city. We have had prayer walks. We had prayed once a month at the high school gym. Some of you have attended. We've had community feeding, meal of thanks for Thanksgiving, where we go and knock on the doors. The community back here, the community down on 52, and we give the meals to the resident there. We've had a cookout for our youth at the new park down there. We have visited churches in the community and we still got to continue that. And we had a prayer vision for one of our fallen officers, Lieutenant John Smith.
Stuart.
I'm Stuart. I'm sorry. I see Stuart right here. And I just want to say to you that we as community, a lot of our group is not here today. Hal, if anybody know Hal, he's somewhere chasing some ball game somewhere. Some is on the beach, some are at work and not make it, but we are a unified group. And there's a lot of other things that we have planned to do in the city. We have some events coming up that you will hear about it later, what we are doing. So why I'm telling you about us as community, this is Annalisa Smith, Smith, I got it. This is Cassandra Bennett, and this is Mayor Yomika Robinson. We have Hal Elwitz, Mary Alice Board, Tommy Board, Dr. Laura Hittson, Will Tommy, Stacy Morris, Vista Hannah, Tasha Brown, Valerie Brittany, also Gladys.
Katara.
Yes. We have, all of those are part of our group that when we come together, we need every second Saturday in the month. Right now, at Ministries on the Move for Christ, to plan and to implement things for our community. So I just want to say to the mayor, who is a part of this team, to the city council, to all of you that's here, we want you to come and walk this walk with us. We want you to come and work with us. We want to see Lake City be the greatest city in South Carolina when it comes to unity. We have Catholics, a member of this group. We have Baptists. We have Holiness. We have non-denominational. We have superintendent, mayor, teachers, evangelists. We have a diverse group here that we work together. We have some blue collar workers, but we come unified. So too the mayor, to Lake City Council. As we move forward to bring unity in this city, to find the needs for our people in this city, to do the best that we can. We had our first gala last year and we thank God for that. We can have, we have some finance now because we were using our own monies. We adopt somewhere around about 14 or 16 students every year from the Lake City schools in this area. And whatever their wish list is, we purchase it. If it's iPad, only thing we don't buy is cell phones. We're not purchasing a cellphone. But we try to meet that wish list for these children who are unfortunate. And I wish you could come to one of our Christmas gatherings to see the tears in these children's eyes when we give them their gifts. So again, the minutes are running out. Lake City. City Council, Mayor, we need you. Let's walk this together. Let's do this together to make Lake City the best city in the state of South Carolina. Thank you. In our scripture, Psalms 133. You know that scripture? Do you know the verse? Did you say it? Okay, Psalm 133. It says, "How good it is when brothers dwell together in unity, and the high neck unity is the execution of..."
Thank you, Ms. Hall. I apologize. I do see Reverend Hemingway. Yes. I didn't see him in the back back there.
Greetings, Mayor Robinson, City Council, and the city of Lake City. It is an honor and pleasure to stand before your day to give thanks and praise to the outstanding city of Lake City. April of 2024, we had our first PD Denim Day. We had great speakers, motivational speakers to the community that were out of food trucks. And we looking to do a greater job next year in the city of Lake City. It was so phenomenal that we are coming back to Lake City next year for our second event. I would like to present a award to Lake City, Outstanding Leadership Award, presented to the city of Lake City. An appreciation of outstanding leadership for the women of the PD. You just did not honor the women and the courage of women of Lake City, but for surrounding areas that were here. And I just want to thank you. It's a small award, but we don't have much money. But from our hearts, we just want to say thank you. We're going to work on more money so we can get a lot of black next time. Also, we have our second annual PD Youth Day in Florence, 513, Barn Street, this coming Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We have a large number of vendors coming out. We have 22 vendors. We have people from Columbia coming down. We've now received a state resolution from Senator Mike Rickenbaum and all of the senators at the State House. So we are looking to get more funding. So next year, the PD Youth Day will be in the great city of Lake City. And we want to do the same thing that we've been doing in Florence. We have books, bags to give out, school supplies, free food. Please come out and eat this food. Two Walmarts of Florence have donated all the food, so we'll have plenty of food, water, and other items. And we also supposed to be getting a truckload of water from Niagara Falls. When we do, we're going to split some of the water for the city of Lake City. So when we get that truckload, we'll let you know and we'll bring the water over.
Thank you. And our speaker, our speaker for on Saturday for PD Youth Day will be Senator Mike Rickenbaum.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Gentlemen, before you start your presentation, I wish to bring to the point that the individual you wish to honor tonight is here in the room.
Yes.
But we broadcast on Facebook and we prefer that face not to be broadcast.
We understand.
For her because of her duty.
That's right.
Chief Miles will accept in their honor.
Thank you.
Chief.
Good evening to the mayor, city council members, town administrator, to police, town clerk. Thank you for your coordination to make this happen today and your work at large. Good evening. On behalf of the town of Atlantic Beach, we'd like to recognize two outstanding officers that participated in the North River Beach Bike Fest, better known as Atlantic Beach Bike Fest. It's a tradition that lasts 35 years that during Memorial Day weekend, this activity has been going on. And it's a group of bikers come from all over the nation. A great time, it's a family event, and it was very enjoyable. From my observation, as a retired United States Army officer, I observed two outstanding officers that deployed from Lake City to the town of Atlantic Beach instantaneously, acclimated into the environment they were in. And that shows that they were well-trained officers. That's reflected with the chief, executive chief, for sending us two outstanding trained officers. We really appreciate that. That's very emblematic. From my observation, as I say, I'm a former commander at different levels. And being in that environment and watching those officers perform, it was immaculate. They were there with the officers, communication skills, adaptability. You're talking 92, 95 degree weather. We're talking working 14 hours a day and without any incident. So they were a major asset to our operations. We had the Highway Patrol, SLED, Department DNR, North River Beach, Harriet County, North River Beach Police Departments. It was a joint operation. And we're very pleased and show our gratitude to those officers. We'd like to recognize them with a plaque, Certificate of Appreciation. I'll read it and Chief Castillo will present it as a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is proudly presented to Major Dietrich Graham. Your compliment for your outstanding performance of duty during the Atlantic Beach Bike Fest for doing the period of May 24, 2024 through May 27, 2024. Your significant contribution to ensure the efficiency of administrative support and safety of the bike festival participants, signed by Jay Hammond, Mayor of the town of Atlantic Beach. And, okay, okay, this officer, again... This officer, uh, again, performed in an immaculate way and beyond the call of duty, both officers did. You're commended for your outstanding performance of duty during the Atlantic Beach Bike Festival during the period of May twenty twenty-four through May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Your significant contribution to ensure the efficiency of the administrative support and safety of the bike festival participants. Signed by Mayor Jake Evans, Town of Atlantic Beach.
Mr. Bellamy, did you want to get in the picture? Thank you.
So again, I want to give that to the town of Atlantic Beach, to Mayor Evans and the city council members. We appreciate your service and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the presentations. Um, one last thing on the presentations that by my mistake, I wanted to ask. Oh, we do have one more presentation. Correct, okay. That by my mistake, I do apologize. Can all the parents of the young ladies that went to Palmetto Girls State please stand? Because you're a very big part of these young ladies' lives. Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Hall?
Chief Miles, may I ask you to step up and introduce your promotion for our new victims' advocate and investigator, please?
I'm from New Marion Council. Um, I'd like to introduce to the citizens here as well as mayor and council, Yvonne McKnight. She's not a new face to me. I worked with Yvonne back in, when was Yvonne?
Two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fourteen. So she's not a new face to us. Um, she worked here at the police department during that time in a different capacity. She came back to us from SLED, and she's completed her training at the Criminal Justice Academy, and she's worked the patrol division, she's got, become acclimated to that, and she's now being moved over into the investigations division. Position she'll be filling will be victims' advocate and special victims investigator. She will handle primarily sexual assault cases, domestic violence cases, and cases that require special assistance that also is going to require some special training that she's well, well-equipped for and already adapted to.
That's awesome. Congratulations. I think we have, we have some proud parents out there. Please stand, please stand, please stand. Oh, grandparents, oh, yeah, everybody stand. All right, Yvonne, Yvonne got the whole. Yes, that's what it's about, that family support. Thank you so much for being here.
But mayor and council, but it also shows that promoting from within gives the staff an opportunity of growth and a potential of success.
Yes. Thank you so much, thank you so much. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything? Okay.
I'm excited for this, uh, new role. When I took the position.
Oh, okay. When I was told that I was being promoted, um, I made sure I let Chief Miles know he would not be disappointed. Um, always wanted to be an investigator primarily on cold cases, but, um, hopefully I'll get to work those also. Thank you, guys. If anyone needs information, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you so much, thank you. I know you're gonna do an outstanding job. Next, we're on the agenda, we have our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to counsel. Any public comments? Thank you.
Uh, yes, my name is Laura Davis. Well, I have two problems. Uh, the first is Most Street was impaled. But the main problem is five forty-one Most Street where I live. Uh, my neighbor, part of family, has got five dogs in the backyard. And you can smell on the back and the front and the side. And I shouldn't have to live there like that. And it took me thirty-three years and a half to pay for that house. Okay, my husband called somewhere and he says nothing, nobody can do but the odor. Before I get them out under my carport shed, you can smell the dog. I shouldn't have to live like that. And then, I didn't know you could make dogs in the city. And it goes on a kind of, they be hauling at night when they make them. I'll, I'll assume you have to have license to do that. And then, you put them up on a board, and the odor is worse than that. Five dogs in the backyard, and my backyard and his yard Johnny together, and it's about four meters. I shouldn't have to live like that, no, and got to pay tax. I should be able to live decent without smelling all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I have a lot to say, but two minutes. I'll drop it down to. First thing, we need to drop this down.
Can you state your name?
My name is Tim McFadden.
Okay.
And first thing we need to, uh, report on is the water. The water bill keeps going up, and we got leaks all over town. All over town. Every street you go on in the hood, there's a leak. All right, second thing we need to talk about is when they come, when the police officer ride through the hood, it's like Darlington Racetrack. Need to slow it down. I be out there walking with my grandkid. Okay? We don't have sidewalk in the hood like you guys over here in the city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Any other public comment? If none, we're gonna move on to our business legislative part. If anyone wants to exit, go ahead and exit. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Do you want to stay or leave?
All right, mayor and council, if it pleases, mayor and council, I have for your consideration Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four Point Oh-Oh-Seven. Uh, final reading, this is a resolution or ordinance? All right, because it says resolution. All right, ordinance number Twenty Twenty-four Point Zero-Zero-Seven. An ordinance to amend the Code of City of Lake City, South Carolina, Chapter Sixteen, to add a new subsection, providing that a person who violates any section of the city code of ordinance with the intent to intimidate another person or persons in whole or in part because of the action or perceived race, color, creed, religion, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, physical or mental disability, or national origin of any other person or persons is guilty of the separate offense of hate, intimidation, and shall be punished as provided herein.
I need a motion to approve ordinance Two Zero Two Four Point Zero Zero Seven for final reading.
Motion to approve Two Zero Two Four Zero Zero Seven.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
What brought this about?
I, I think everybody's, uh, is, uh, heading this direction. Uh, the State House did not adopt the hate crime, and this is in similar, uh, aspects to what the hate crime was on the South Florida.
Um, basically, in, in front of municipal association, um, South Carolina is one of the only two states that have not enacted statewide hate crime legislation. Um, so there are a number of municipalities, I think right now fifteen known in the state of South Carolina that has passed this ordinance. And Lake City is not one as of yet, but it would definitely help to pass this bill in the legislation. Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four Dat- Point Zero Three One, final reading. The city of Lake City, mayor and council, accept grant funds from the South Carolina Aeronomics in the amount of ninety-five thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars for the Lake City Municipal Airport that will be used to tree removal, tree trimming along the, along with the perimeter fence repair and or replacement and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Two Zero Two Four Point Zero Three One for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Has anyone been, um, identified, um, as to who you're gonna hire, send out any bids or anything as to who's gonna do it?
This is, uh, not been bid out yet. They will follow the procurement policy to bid these out.
What we're gonna do, um, when you do, if you will, include those, all of the bids in the agenda packet, so council can decide.
Any other questions or concerns on this resolution?
Is this, I have a question. How often, how often does, do the repairs need to be done? Like, how often will, will they be done?
The last time the trees were cut at the airport, I think, was about seven years ago. Uh, but the fence is now falling down and is in dire need of repair. It's not just the fact of closing off the airport and securing it again, it's also of the safety hazard that anybody can now just walk onto that property.
Okay, so you'd be getting different businesses or contractors, ones to do the trees, ones to do the fence repairs.
That's to my understanding, the fence, a fence repair person can't, don't do trees. So it will be two vendors and two bids.
Okay, do you know how much, um, is allotted for the fence repair or the tree cutting?
The Aeronomics said that the thirty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, I think, is for the fence, and eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars is the total for the tree trimming. State funds of sixty-eight, four, state funds of twenty-seven, one sixty-eight. These have already been awarded to the city, we just have to accept them or send a denial letter that we don't wish for the funds.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor of this resolution, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four Point Oh-Three-Three, final reading, mayor and council, accept, oh, this is all correct?
It died.
It's dead.
It died, okay.
All right, sorry about that. All right, mayor and council, for your consideration, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four Point Oh-Three-Four, final reading. The city of Lake City is seeking in consideration for the storm drain work performed on McAllister Street Apartments, and the city of Lake City will credit the building fee, review fee, uh, the sum of not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand dollars and all matters related thereto. So basically, in exchange for us having to pay to put the storm drains in, we will waive uh, about ninety percent of their building fee and let them pay the entire bill. McAllister Apartments, correct. Yeah, so that means we don't have to pay the bill.
I need a motion to approve Resolution Two Zero Two Four Point Zero Three Four for final reading.
Second.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved in second. Between the guys.
Yeah, one, one of us.
And the other guy second. It has been properly moved in second. Any questions, council? Any other questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Uh, mayor and council, for your consideration, the Lake, the city of Lake City is seeking, uh, reappointment of the following members to the Airport Commission Board. Dusan Fadet Fredo, expired date of eight eleven, twenty twenty-seven. George L. Cohen, M.D., expiration date of eight eleven, twenty twenty-seven. Tony Whitlock, expiration date eight eleven, twenty twenty-seven. Robert Gottman, expiration date eight eleven, twenty twenty-seven. And Kevin Lynch, expiration date eight eleven, twenty twenty-seven.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Two Zero Two Four Point Zero Three Five for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Any questions?
Do we have anyone else to express an interest in serving?
Madam clerk?
Do we advertise what?
It's reconsidered, they, they have reconsideration rights first because it's a term.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and council, for your consideration, uh, mayor and council accepts grant funds in the amount of eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars from the state of South Carolina for the city of Lake Kid City to replace approximately three hundred goose neck fittings at approximately three hundred water service addresses within the city limits of Lake City and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Two Zero Two Four Point Zero Three Six for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Any questions, council?
Could you explain to everyone, is a goose neck fitting?
Actually, what it is doing is removing the iron, lead piping from the existing homes of about three hundred we've identified. The state will pay us, uh, to change them out.
What, will that, like, have caused, like, any type of leakage or anything like that?
No.
It's, it's all because of lead. It's all because of lead.
Yeah, lead and safety.
It's actually, it's actually a nationwide.
Yes.
Can we get a list of the, um, three hundred homes here that have the addresses that have been, um, identified?
For, may I ask, for what reason? Okay.
I'm not, I'm not gonna dignify that with response. William, will you please supply? I'm not, I'm not going to dignify that with response. William, will you please supply, provide a list of the identified addresses, please?
The identified addresses have not been put on paper yet. It is an estimate that we have 300 based on the age of our system.
When do you anticipate getting the addresses?
They're working on compiling that as we speak.
Okay, well, when you get them, will you please send all the council members a list? If they want, I know I would like to get a list.
If you get it, all the council members get it, so everybody gets it.
Are there any other questions on this resolution? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Mayor and counsel, for your consideration, resolution number 2024.037, final reading. Mayor and council accepts the grant funds in the amount of, I'm reading the wrong one. Am I not? Nope, the grant funds of 858,500 from the state of South Carolina for the city of Lake City to rehab and repair existing Matthew Rose Tank and all, and, and the city of Lake City Drinking Water System and all matters related thereto.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2024.037 for final reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. It has been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, page 40 of your report is the financials through June 30th, and as I will say, we still have revenue that we've been putting back. Taxes are paid in the readers. We have gotten, not gotten all our money, and we will reset, but receipt those into our system as receivable when they come. So the general fund, we have $9,660,000. We've spent $10,381,000. So we have 89% of our revenue in, we've sent 102% of our expenses, overspent the revenue as of this date by $1,303,000. In the water area, we have revenue of $1,942,000. That's 87% of the budget, and we have expenses of $1,908,000. We have a surplus of $70,000. In the sewer side, we have $3,101,000. That's 80% of the budget. We have expenses of $3,995,000. We've overspent by $888,000. In the stormwater area, we have a year-to-date number of $212,000. After a $50,000 expense, we have revenue excess of $162,000, $120,000. In the reserve account for the water, we have a year-to-date of $73,740. In the year-to-date reserve for the sewer, we have a number of $72,135,000. That's the financials. Mayor and counsel, with your consideration, I present to you the bills to be approved, bills one through nine.
Need a motion to approve bills, items one through nine, for July 9, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been properly moved and second. Any questions, counsel?
So what happens if we don't pay? Do we have to pay late fees if we go back a month?
Yes, if we're not paid on time, we do get charged late fees. Now, we can call and get consideration, but at this date in time, with the economy doing the way it is, it's hard for them to even want to give consideration.
Any other questions, counsel, on the bills, items one through nine? If none, all in favor paying the bills, items one through nine, show of hands.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Any opposed?
Thank you, mayor and council. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we'll have our mayor and council report, and we will begin with Councilmember Brown.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everyone come out. Nice to see everyone got their awards tonight. That was nice and pleasant. I don't have too much to report. I know I had a citizen come to me and asked me about a treat if you could get, probably cold enforcement, or someone go to Singletary and Main Street. They say it's like some bushes or something blocking the road whenever they go to turn out. And then I had, I'm not jumping lines anymore, but I had someone tell me over there on McGregor Circle and M Street, McGregor Circle and Ray Street, say it's some bushes or something in the way.
To, to McGregor and?
McGregor, McGregor and.
You said Ray.
Ray, yeah, McGregor and Ray and Singletary and Main. That's the only thing I got to report, and other than that, I'm having my crime watch meeting tomorrow at Montclair Church, Montclair Missionary Baptist Church, 10:09 East Main Street. At 6 o'clock, I'd love to see everyone come out in the 10. Guest speaker will be Chief Patrick Miles. He will come and talk to us about some of the things that's going on in our district. If anyone wants to come from any other district and you want your P. you know, talk with him, he, he'll be open and talk to you. Other than that, that's pretty much about all I got.
Mayor, my apologies. I did overlook our chief of police. I have to make a brief report on.
That's fine. Was Councilmember Brown, were you, you done?
Not okay with you?
Yeah, and I'd come back after.
I apologize.
Good afternoon again, mayor and council. I'd like to take a second to thank Administrator Bellamy and Chief LaSalle from Atlantic Beach. What, what, what you saw there was the mutual aid in action. They called and had a request that we send some officers down for Bike Week, and we complied with that request, and two officers go. And you heard directly from the administrative and chief of how they perform. That's what happens when we have cooperations between departments throughout the state. A lot of people ask, why do we have a mutual aid with Atlantic Beach? Well, Atlantic Beach, they, they have a pretty, pretty large function, pretty large event in that, that's a small town that they have there. It's like we, we have Artsfield. That's a pretty large event for our small town. So luckily, we haven't had a need to call on other cities for mutual aid. However, in the past, we've, we have had to rely on SLED as well as the sheriff's office for Artsfield. But also, I'd be proud to say that we're as full now as we've ever been at Lake City Police Department in the last five years at least.
That's great.
100%.
We have more officers on staff, more officers on staff to stand and take the call. And what we're doing is we're doing some slight restructuring within the police department and officers like Bond, who, they, they stand up and take the call. You know, we're, we're going to have their back and, and support them as well. But getting into the statistics for the month of June, just a reminder, the month of May, we had a total of 1,380 calls per service. The month of June, we've had 1,924 calls for service. So that's an increase, which we also had a holiday, and we also had a function within the city, which is the law enforcement network. I've spoken with a few council members about what that is and explaining what that is. That's where pretty much every law enforcement agency within the 12th Judicial Circuit, Florence and Marion Counties, they participate in the network, and we're part of that network. And they, they go around to different cities, different municipalities, different areas in the county, and they, they do enforcement action. So that's the reason for the increase in some of these, and some of the reasons for the increase in some of these numbers is going to be, it's, it's proactive policing. What that is, is where the calls are generated by the officers. They, they don't wait for the 911 call. They're out there actively searching for criminal activity. So they generate that call. And in response to crime, we're going to kick up enforcement action. That's kind of what we do. So again, 1,924 calls for service, that includes 471 traffic stops, 68 burglar alarms, 35 domestic violence calls. Bond, that's, she's going to be handling a lot of those now. 39 follow-up calls when an officer goes out and follows up with the complainants or the victims or even suspects. We had 878 property checks. That accounts for 45.63% of our call volume for the month of, for the month of June. 878.
Is that because of the summertime or?
It is. That is where, what these property checks are, is businesses and homeowners and, you know, property owners within the city, they request that, that we do property checks in relation to them going on vacation or whatever the case may be, and we go out and check the property for them. Sometimes they request just a simple ride-by, be present in the area. Sometimes they request that we get out and walk around their house, and we, we do everything we can to, to fulfill that request. So 878 property checks, 24 suspicious persons called, 22 motor vehicle accidents, 20 disorderly calls. That's simply an individual being disorderly in public. Somebody's called 911 on them. We have 20 of those for the month of June. 30 suspicious vehicle calls, kind of the same thing. Seven vandalism calls, 33 harassment and threatening calls, 22 warrant services, six assaults, 21 larcenies, five reported shooting calls. That's, that doesn't mean there was five people that got shot in Lake City. That means somebody dialed 911 five times and said they, they've heard what they believe to be gunfire. 10 break-ins, 10 reported break-ins, 17 trespassing calls. And going into the traffic stuff, out of those 471 traffic stops, which again accounted for 24.48% of our call volume, they issued only 121 traffic tickets. So I think anybody would be hard pressed to say Lake City's just out here writing tickets, be writing tickets. 471 traffic stops and only 21 tickets where somebody was actually charged a monetary amount for the infractions that they committed. They have their day in court. They can plead guilty, not guilty, and the judge can adjudicate the case however he or she sees fit. I think what that shows is, again, month after month, that the officers are cooperative. They cooperate with these violators. They don't write them a ticket for everything they can. They're writing more warrant tickets than they are actual traffic tickets. And I think that's a good thing. Sometimes it's just you need the education. You don't necessarily need the ticket to receive that education. But of the 121 traffic tickets that was issued, 23 of them were motor vehicle license violations. There was four simple possessions of marijuana that was written on traffic tickets. 10 speeding tickets were issued, nine operating uninsured vehicles, 17 driver's license violations, 16 driving under suspensions, and three DUIs. And in addition to the, the numbers that I've stated so far, out of all of that, there was 140 incident reports done, 26 arrests made, 61 arrest warrants issued, and 38 arrest warrants served. That pretty much closes out the statistics for June.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, chief. Sorry for my oversight.
Like I said, I will be having my crime watch meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. Love to see everyone come out and talk with Chief Miles, and if you have any questions for me, I, I'll be sure to answer them the best way I can, and I'll come back to Mr. Hall or the mayor, and we'll get the best answer we can get for you. Other than that, have a nice night.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I would like to say congrats to the young ladies that participated in the Pemela to Girls State. Congratulations to you again, and continue to do, even though they're gone, I'm sure. You never know who's watching, so continue to, to do great things for yourself and, and for your family as well. I would like to thank everyone who came out to the crime, to the district meeting for Districts one and four. Also, Chief Miles was there to give us information about starting a crime watch community group in our communities. I hope that everyone gained the right knowledge in order to start a crime watch group in your community. And if you have any other questions or concerns, if you have any other questions or concerns about how to do it, I'm sure he's always available, or you can contact me as well, and I will get you, get you all the necessary information in order to do so. Just wanted to also, I'm sure maybe everyone has probably gotten a postcard about the census. I just ask that you guys take heed to that, and then whenever anyone comes out concerning the census that, well, I have gotten one, but, yeah. Oh, that's interesting. Well, this, I got one. Okay, so, well, I guess it was only for me. But, yeah, so moving forward. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, okay, moving forward. Just wanted to also give you guys a, a heads up on the Kids Eat Free at MUSC at Black River. So a lot of kids, they rely on school meals. And of course, with legislative and everything, you know, the, the school lunch program was cut out. So therefore, I know that Black River is far away, but if you can take someone down there to eat, they're feeding this, the entire month, July the 1st through the 31st, excuse me, I think it started at 11 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, but please take a child there, because you just never know who may not get something to eat. We are very fortunate to be able to go to any place we want, most of us, to get what we want to eat and how, you know, and eat as much as we can. And some people don't even have that. So we got to be thankful, and we just have to be, continue to look out for one another, especially a child. And the only other thing is, William, if you could just speak with the trash department, well, waste, the waste department, because I've seen some complaints about trash being left in the streets in different neighborhoods. And I think it was, this time it was on Darlington Street. And so we want everybody's neighborhood to be taken care of and to look pleasant.
This coming out from 96, down low out parts, that it's falling out of the truck.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, 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 yeah. So if that could just be, if you could do something with that, and of course, trash is nasty and it stinks. So, yeah, so, yeah, actually, yeah, if you could do that, that'd be, that'd be great, and I just encourage every, oh, and also, it's a lot of back-to-school programs that's going on, back-to-school giveaways, because I think Lake City's having one tomorrow. So therefore, if you have a child, and I think it's first come, first served, correct? So we have 200 and 7, yeah, Facebook, 275, so that is great. If you guys can bring your kids out, it is first one, first come, first served. So if you can do that, of course, that will help some parents out with school supplies.
Four to six.
And food, for four to six. Thank you, I appreciate you. Yeah, for four to six. So other than that, that's it. Y'all have a good month, and continue to be safe and be vigilant.
Oh, okay, um, thank you all for coming out. Councilmember Cooper said pretty much some of what I wanted to say, and want to thank her for that information on the school, on the lunch program for children and census, and a lot of the other information is very, very well-known. Again, thank you for coming, and when you come next month, bring your neighbor or friend, bring about 10, 12 people, okay?
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming out. Councilmember Cooper definitely took my whole report a little bit. So just to reiterate a little bit, congratulations to the three young ladies that was awarded tonight. Also, thank you for those who came out to District one and four meeting. Also, thank you to Chief Miles for being there. The back-to-school bash is tomorrow. Councilmember Brown meeting is tomorrow. What else tomorrow? Church tomorrow. But thank you all for coming out.
Nothing to report.
Just say goodnight, I guess.
Good night.
Thank you, councilmen, members, for your, for your reports on tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and voicing their concerns. Thank you for viewing on Facebook and our social media platforms. I want to thank all the ones who made presentations and the ones who were presented to tonight, to our young ladies from Pemela to Girls State. I'm just so elated and happy for them. Like I said before, this was my fourth year attending Girls State, and I love to see our young women, young ladies from the school district being a part of that experience. It's a week long, I don't say a week long, but they stay a week long, and they even go to, to the State House to meet Boys State there, and they all come together. So it's, it's a great experience for our young ladies across the state of South Carolina. Thanks to Ms. Paula and the community, community group for coming out and speaking about community. Let's continue. Let's continue to just do great things in the City of Lake City, to keep spreading the message about the power of unity, the strength of being together and working together. So, I appreciate you all, and this group, anybody can be a part of it. So, if you want to, contact the head lady right there, Ms. Paula Morris. Also, thanks to Reverend Hemmway, I think he's already left, for the recognition for the City of Lake City for participating in the first PD Denim Day. I really appreciate him. Thanks to Chief Casillo and Mr. Bellamy for recognizing our officers on tonight. And like Chief Miles said, that's, that's how the mutual aid works. And I appreciate them coming out and recognizing and appreciate, appreciating our officers. Congratulations, Ms. Vaughn. I say Ms. Vaughn, Investigative Vaughn. Congratulations, and we are here to support you in any way that we can. We appreciate you. The announcements, like we stated before, time after time, our back-to-school bash is tomorrow. So, please come out, first come, first served, bring your student, bring your children. You have to bring a city hall. If you ask, when you walk out, you'll see the big tent. It's right over there. We're going to have food, we're going to have music, we're going to have backpacks. There'll be clear bags that Florence School District 3 wants our children to have. So, please do come out from 4 to 6 tomorrow. So, bring, you have to bring your child with you to receive the backpack. Please, bring your child with you. Also, we have our Small Business, Minority and Veteran Small Business Expo that will be happening this Friday, and I am very happy that we were contacted from the SBA, which is the Small Business Administration, wanting to host that Small Business Expo here in the City of Lake City. I've never known for that to happen. I've asked them, and they said they don't know if it happened either. So, for them to be looking at our city, we are doing something. And it will be a, a lot of people coming from different counties, Lee County, Winsburg County, Clarendon County, from all over to come to the Small Business Expo. Be Friday, July 12, from 10 to 1 at the Continuum. So, if you have a small business, or you're just thinking about starting a small business, or just want information, come out. We will have our Congressman, James Claiborne, who will be present, and Isabel Casilla Guzman, I believe I said her last name right, from the, the Administrator from the U.S. Small Business Administration will be here. It would, it would be very worthwhile for you to come. The students are not in school yet. Bring them. Let them see, let them get information about the Small Business Expo. It's going to be a lot, a lot of information and worthwhile to come. You have, you, you don't, well, we want you to register. It's free. So, there's a link on our website and on our Facebook page that you can click on and register there. I got an update today. We actually have over 200 registrants already. So, it's going to be what it says in Expo.
Can we share that we are, one of two, that it will happen in the state of South Carolina?
Yes.
Parkwell is the other.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Saturday, July 13, the day after that, will be the PD Youth Day Initiative. This will actually be held in Florence, and this is what Mr. Reverend Hemmway was speaking of before. This is the Second Annual PD Youth Day Initiative, and Senator Mike Rickumbout will be one of the speakers. It's going to be a lot going on there. Please bring your youth out there. I'm actually the co-chair of this PD Youth Day Initiative organization. So, please do come out on that day as well. We have lots and lots of things going on. I want everybody just to continue to be safe and be, and stay, try to stay cool in all of this heat that we're experiencing. Our students are still on summer vacation. They will be starting school back, most of them, August 1st. So, I just pray that we all have, continue to have a safe summer and to start off a new school year. And I know that there will be other events going on from other organizations, churches. I know there's VBS, Vacation Bible Schools, that's still going on. So, just continue to be safe in anything and everything that you do, traveling for your vacations, for your families and all. I appreciate everybody for coming out tonight. I do see Ms. Cynthia back there. We will be getting the record, she's over there. We'll be getting out the football registration for our recreation, so look out for that. I know you would definitely, the kids will get them when they start in school, the Flyers, and they will be, be bringing them home to mama and daddy. So, make sure that you sign your child up for football or cheerleading for our recreation for the next school year. And that's all that I have on tonight. Thank you, everyone. I just need an, a motion to adjourn. Thank you.